Good evening, everyone. Can everybody hear me in the back? Just want to make sure before we start. Perfect. So this is the September 20th East Long Meadow Planning Board meeting. So we'll start here with a call of the role. So to my right, Pete Punderson, George Kingston, Russ Denver, myself, John Torsia, Bailey Mitchell, and Nina Fazio. So now we'll go into the approval of the August 16th, 2022 meeting minutes. I know that there is one revision that we already have, just switching the date from July the 19th, 2022 to the correct date, August the 16th, 2022. I didn't know if there were any other revisions at this time.
All right.
I'll make a motion to approve as amended. Second.
All those, any other further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, any abstentions? That carries four to zero. I just wanted to also make another quick announcement. Is anybody recording this meeting besides LCAP at this time? If so, just please make yourself know right now. Seeing none, we will continue on to the agenda. I know that we are looking at placing an item out of order. Could somebody?
I'll make a motion to take number one under other business out of order.
Okay, so we're taking number one under other business. Discussion of tower color for approved for Verizon cell tower.
That's a motion, John. Have the second.
Second, second.
That's the second, okay. All those, any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
No nays, no abstentions. That passes four to zero. Okay, so we have, can we invite the applicant for the Verizon cell tower?
Attorney Fenton was coming in on Zoom.
Perfect.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Good evening, Attorney Fenton. So I know we're here to just discuss colors, and I know you've provided us with a couple of different colors, color schemes.
That's correct. So, Mr. Chair, my name is Attorney Michael Fenton. I'm a shareholder at Shatz, Forts &amp; Fenton. Our office is located at 1441 Main Street, Suite 1100 in Springfield, counsel to Selco Partnership, doing business as Verizon Wireless. We're here pursuant to the special permit and variance that was granted for the erection of a cell tower at 16 Meadowbrook Road. And the request before the board tonight is that, consistent with the prior approval, the board select a color for the tower. Verizon's standard recommendation, based on New England weather conditions, which are ever-changing, is that the tower be completed with a steel galvanized finish. So that is the preference of Verizon Wireless. If the board wishes, we will paint it another color. And if I'm given screen sharing abilities, I will provide the board with some recommended colored palettes to select from. There we go. Okay, can you see my screen here?
Yes.
Okay. So the left-hand screen, you have four different color options. One is a green Sherman Williams Industrial Color 6447, commonly referred to as Evergreens. There's two other gray options and a brown option that has been selected by our consultant, which is called French Roast. For your reference, these slides on the right, which are part of the photo simulations that were previously submitted to the board, show two of these options. Currently, the color of the tower before you on this slide one is the steel galvanized finish. This is the brown French roast finish. And then this third option that's shown on the drawings is the Evergreens finish.
Take, I mean, I'm okay with that recommendation, but I can pass the mic to anybody else on the board who'd like to comment on this.
Which recommendation, the galvanized?
The steel galvanized, yes. I'm comfortable with it, but I don't need somebody else.
I'm good with it. We're good.
Okay. All right. So do we want to make that in the form of a motion?
We don't need to vote.
No vote, okay. So yes, that would be our recommendation, or your recommendation would be good.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. We will instruct the client to proceed with the steel galvanized finish. And if no vote will be taken, I would just ask that the decision be reflected in the minutes so that that can be cited in the building permit application.
Perfect, yes, we can do that.
Thank you very much.
Okay, moving along on our agenda. I'm going to pass this over to our clerk so he can read the first public waiver.
Case SPRW 2022-27, request for a site plan review waiver for the replacement of modular units at 45 Fisher Avenue, Assessors Map ID 14-7A- A on a 2.30 plus or minus acre lot in the industrial zoning district. Applicant Saga Communications of New England, Inc., CEO David Aldred, 45 Fisher Ave, East Long Meadow, Mass. 01028.
Okay, and somebody representing the applicant here to see. Also, once you're, when you're done speaking, could you sign in also on the signup sheet there?
Right here, sure.
You can start.
Okay, good evening. My name's John Dross. I'm with Fitzgerald Law here in East Long Meadow, and we represent Saga Communications of New England, Inc., which is, for most of us know, it's Rock 102. They have, on Fisher Avenue, they have their operation center. And what they're doing is, there's a couple of buildings that are modular units, and they're just replacing them. It's been a while, and they're going through the renovations and just replacing the existing units with new units. Same footprint, no changes, no parking changes, just getting a new, a couple of new buildings.
Same amount of staff going to be there?
Same amount of staff, no changes in staff. And the, just new, a couple of new buildings.
Okay, just want to make sure the parking was good.
Yep. Thank you.
Any other members have any other questions for the applicant? Hearing none?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, that motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, any abstentions? That motion passes four to zero. Next item.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Case SPRW 2022-28, request for a site plan review waiver for the installation of roof-mounted solar panels at 215 Summers Road, Assessors Parcel ID 40-8-0 on an 8.40 plus or minus acre lot in the Residence A Zoning District. Applicant Valley Solar LLC, Beal Box 60627, Florence, Mass. 01062.
Evening. So if you just want to kind of give us a kind of brief explanation of the application?
Sure. I'm Jesse, I'm from Valley Solar. And we're just looking to put, it's 23 kilowatts AC on the church at this address. It's roof-mounted solar. The equipment will go on the inside and also on the outside of the building. But there won't be any changes to parking or anything like that. So it's going on one roof plane at the site. Will be visible from Chestnut Street. This is the corner of Chestnut and Summers Road. But yeah, let me know if you have any specific questions.
Will there be any changes to the landscaping if, to get the sun rays? Or is that not an issue?
Nope.
On this portion?
Not an issue at this site.
Does anybody else from the board have any questions? Does somebody have, hearing no, questions? Does somebody have a motion on this?
Make a motion to approve.
No, seconded.
Okay. Motion has been made and seconded. Any further discussion? And all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, any abstentions, abstentions? That carries four to zero.
Thank you.
Case SPRW 2022-29, request for a site plan review waiver for Michelle Murray, LMHC, for change in location from 143C Shaker Road to 15 Benton Drive, Suite 5, Assessors Parcel ID 9-6-4 in an existing structure located in industrial garden park zoning district. Applicant Michelle Murray, 15 Benton Drive, East Long Meadow, Mass. 01028.
Is the applicant or representative of the applicant here this evening?
Coming in as panelists.
Perfect. Okay. Is she able to come in or?
I don't.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
All right, can you see me?
Yes, we can hear you. Perfect.
All right, the lighting isn't great, sorry. So, yes, I'm a psychotherapist in private practice. I'm just looking to change my office address.
Okay. So are there any questions for the board? Just looks like a change of.
So just, tell us exactly what building you're in now.
I'm at 15 Benton Drive.
No, the one you're going, leaving and going.
Oh, I was at Shaker Road. It was 163 Shaker Road.
So for the people in the audience, give a visual. Which side of?
It's the building right across from the pizza shop.
Okay, okay, great. Does anybody else from the board have any other questions?
No.
Would somebody like to make a motion on this?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded on this item. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, any abstentions? That carries four to zero. Next item.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Case SPRW 2022-30, request for a site plan review waiver for Contoured by Crystal, a non-invasive body sculpting business at 200 North Main Street, Suite 9, Assessors Parcel ID 5-4-0, located in an existing structure in the Business Zoning District. Applicant Crystal Prendergast, 83 Harkness Ave, East Long Meadow, Mass. 01028.
Good evening. So just kind of explain generally what the business is and what you'll be doing there, hours of operations, things like that.
So I offer non-invasive body sculpting. So it's inch loss, skin tightening, it's all non-invasive, so no downtime, no surgery, nothing like that. Hours of operation are between nine and five.
Any other further employees or just?
Just myself.
Does anybody else?
Yeah. Does this require a license of any kind?
No, just not.
So the health department does not need to get involved? Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, perfect. Any other questions from the board? If not?
Make a motion to approve? Motion to approve?
Second.
Second, motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no, any abstentions, no abstentions? That motion carries four to zero. All right.
Case SPRW 2022-31, request for a site plan review waiver for East Long Meadow Psychic for change in location for 34 Shaker Road to 10 Crane Avenue, GIS 10-12 Crane Avenue, Assessors Parcel ID 27-19-0, in existing structure located in the Business Zoning District. Applicant Tina Marks, 60 Davis Street, Springfield, Mass. 01104.
Good evening, gentlemen.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So yeah, same thing, just kind of explain.
I am moving locations from one building to another. The previous business was located at 34 Shaker Road, which the property owners is Yellowbrook. I'm moving to 10 Crane Avenue. The new owner, his name, his name was David, but I can't pronounce his last name. But he owns the kitchen and bath. That's pretty much it.
Okay. Does that mean?
Same hour, same hours.
Same hours, same, yep, same, everything the same.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second that.
Motion's been made, seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. No abstentions? That motion carries four to zero.
Have a good day, guys.
Did you sign on the?
I gotta get my glasses.
Oh, okay. All right, next item.
Case SPRW 2022-32, request for a site plan review waiver for DJA Family Enterprises LLC, doing business as Barton Hemp Works, a home office at 241 Hamden Road, Assessors Parcel ID 90-13-0, located in the Residence A Zoning District. Applicant David Ayers, 241 Hamden Road, East Long Meadow, Mass. 01028.
So yeah, if you just wouldn't mind kind of explaining the business a little bit, hours of operation, things like that.
Yes, and so this is, previously for the headquarters of the LLC was located in West Springfield. That property, single member LLC, this will basically move the headquarters of the administrative activities to the locations here.
Anticipate any customers coming to this location?
No. The agricultural activity that takes place there currently will continue as such with no changes.
Does anybody on the board have any questions? Hearing none, entertain a motion?
Move to approve. Second.
Been motion made and seconded. So any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. That carries four to zero. And just, yeah, make sure. Awesome. All right, I know for our next, for our public hearings, is there a motion to be made to take one of them out of order, right?
I'll make a motion to, make a motion to take case 2022-8 out of order.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion from the board? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, any abstaining?
So under public hearings, case site 2022-08, request for a site plan review for the construction of a standalone warehouse addition and associated site improvements at 136 Denzil Road, Assessors Parcel ID 10-16-2 on a 3.91 plus or minus acre lot in the industrial garden park district. Applicant Associated Builders, Inc., over Industrial Drive, South Adley, Mass. 01075.
Okay, is there a representative of the applicant here with us this evening? Or on Zoom?
Good evening, commission.
Yes.
I have a board, if you would like me to present it, or we can just talk about the application if you have material.
If you like the board, we can put the, you just, we have the easel right here, so everybody can see that. Hi. Can you name the address for the record?
Absolutely. My name is Kevin Grindel, representing Broadmont Judas, professional engineering firm, representing the applicant this evening for 136 Denzil Road, in Glasreality. With me as well this evening would be representatives from Associated Builders, who's also, you know, will be constructing this project and here to answer any questions that goes to the building. Your project is, as indicated, 136 Denzil Road. There is a 30,000 square foot existing building, a warehouse building, within the industrial zone. What we're looking to do is propose a 15,000 square foot warehouse building on that same property as an expansion of the existing use. As shown on the plan presented here, that 15,000 square foot warehouse building is to the north of the site, or behind the existing building. So from the street, from Denzil Road, there will be no, no change to the project. All building activities will be behind the existing building. With that 15,000 square foot building, there's also adjacent apartment addition on the east side of the site and two additional loading docks on the west side of the site. Again, really serving the additional 15,000 square foot of building we're currently proposing. Overall, there's no proposed increase to employees and vehicle trips, again, with no employee increase, no increased traffic as far as employees at the facility. We anticipate four additional trucks a day to serve the two loading docks on the, on the facility. Really, this is just a result of expansion of the existing tenant. Require more space at this, at this location. So, running through the additional, the other remaining items, there is additional landscape screening, consistent with what is currently onsite, both the portage and side yard, rear yard buffers. The utilities, it's there, the stormwater management. The stormwater basin is to the north of the site, to the rear of the building. The parking and the building is directed stormwater to that basin. There is an existing basin at the front of the site, carrying all stormwater currently onsite to the front. So there will be a net reduction to the front basin and no increase off-site. Other utilities being the water and sewer connections. There's already a sewer connection at the existing building that we're connecting into. There is water stuck to the site. We will be connecting into the water service and gas and, and electric service underground to the utilities adjacent to running along Denzil Road. So we anticipate minimal utility service connections, and there will be no service connections within Denzil Road made onsite or, or at least off pavement. So with that, again, I have additional information as you so choose if there's specific questions. I recognize the intent of the overall project here. What we will be seeing this evening will be a conditional approval from this board because to meeting the requirements of staff comments, having received those staff comments. In my opinion, minor in nature, Public Works has minor comments because to water service sizing. And then we will be in front of the Conservation Commission in August 28th, this month. So what we will be asking for this evening would be a conditional approval based upon conservation approval here on the 28th. So with that, like I said, and myself, Kevin Grindel, as well as representatives from Associated Builders are here to answer, answer any further questions. But I would like to just keep this brief and kick that back over to you, if anything's specific. So thank you.
I'll turn it to the board. Does the board have any specific questions for the applicant?
Who is the current tenant?
I'm going to look to representatives from Associated Builders to identify that tenant. I know it's a warehouse use, but I will look to them as far as identifying.
What I'm interested in is what is going to be stored in the warehouse, since I don't know their business.
Can you come up to the front?
Distribute, distribute rubber hosing products. Okay. So they're warehoused on shelving on rack. Okay, so it's no hazardous materials now? Okay, thank you.
No hazardous materials.
And the fire protection systems designed specifically for that. Okay, thank you.
Your name and, for the record?
Michael Seolick, Associated Builders.
All right, is there any other questions?
I don't have any.
Okay, now we'll go on to opening up the public hearing. So to somebody, make a motion?
You already opened it, you just, you just throwing to the public.
Yes. Would anybody from the public like to speak on this matter?
They're coming.
Can you come up to the front? So that everybody from the back can hear you.
Need the mic.
Give him.
Good evening, gentlemen. My name's Dave Tortalot. I live in East Long Meadow. Peace Road. Nothing was mentioned about the truck traffic. Got four more trucks coming in?
Just through, through the chair.
Where are they coming? Trump, two, what road? Do we have an answer?
We do, to the chair.
We do not have a truck route, based upon the minor nature of four trucks over the eight-hour period, or in fact, 10-hour period during the day. So we do not have that information.
I'd hate to see four more trailer trucks coming up Peace Road, or down Peace Road.
I can't disagree with you, because I live on Peace Road also. But I would, I can't disagree with you, because I live on Peace Road also, for years. I would expect traffic would come from the direction of Shaker Road or other means of accessing the industrial park.
I don't know.
Yeah.
We have a lot of trail trucks now.
And it's ridic, I agree, it's ridiculous, but I just can't see them purposely coming from Summers Road to go to that warehouse at this time. I certainly hope not.
They're coming off the Mass Turnpike, they're coming down, cutting through, they're not stopping in Ludlow, they're going through Wilbraham, and they're coming up Peace Road.
Don't disagree with you. It's four trucks.
Thank you, gentlemen. Answer.
Does the applicant add anything?
Not going to be an answer for this one either.
Add anything else?
Nothing further.
Still.
I just found this question specifically. Okay, are there any other questions or comments from the public?
Hi, Mary Hurley. I live on, off of Benton. And I'm familiar with Benton and Denzil. I live on Chestnut, off of Chestnut Street. And the point about the trucks is just piling on four more trucks. It's, it's a crapshoot to try and get out safely now onto Chestnut, from the fields of Chestnut. And the traffic is horrendous coming up and down Benton. And Denzil's the same story. So I think they should have to at least give them time to put in a small traffic study. And let's find out, considering what the next item coming up is.
One right here.
Just exactly how much of an impact that's going to have as well.
There's one right here, Mary.
I, I didn't know. But there is a traffic, there was a traffic.
Yes. By Barton and?
Barton and La Judas.
It's by Barton and, it looks like Lagudis. Kevin Grindel, ASLA Associate Partner, and Lagudis. Down in East Long Meadow, traffic impact statement. The applicant owner anticipates no increase in number of employees as a result of the proposed warehouse expansion at 136 Denzil Road. Therefore, there is no increase in employee vehicle trips. The applicant owner anticipates a new expansion to generate an average of four additional deliveries per day. The hours of operation, as they are rated to, 6:00 AM to 6:00 PM, Monday through Friday, with dock hours being 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM. So that was done. I don't know who's, you know.
Who's the owner applicant?
I don't know.
Name that too.
Doesn't say it, that's all this is. And as far as where, and as far as where vehicles come from, we can't. And as far as where vehicles come from, we can't, we can't know that. We can certainly understand what impact it would have, don't know where they come from.
Yeah, just echo that, I mean, we would just assume that it's coming to and from in the streets or that surround it. And obviously, the major hubs that are in this town and the town's over from us, so. Is there any other questions regarding? If you can just come up to the front, so that.
Jerry Slade, I live on Chestnut Street. But as far as this product goes, it shows three different companies in there, they haven't identified the company. One's an insulation company, one's a plastics company, and one's a steel company. So what's the, why is it quiet about that? George, I know you're concerned about what's going to be there, depending on the company, it could depend what's in there.
I think it's, I think that's already been addressed by Associated Builders, when they said that this is.
Company is it?
It's the one that does the rubber products.
Which one is that?
I don't know the name of them.
Think we'd have that on the record?
I'm not sure if our planning board staff asked that. Do you, so you, do you happen to know the exact name of the rubber company?
This just comes from.
That's got nothing on it.
The owner applicant is Glasgow LLC, so they are the owner of proposing the development. At this point, if the applicant, excuse me, if the tenant, you know, the tenant of the building is being constructed for. You know, that is the intended user, however, in the future, you know, that space could be inhabited by a different tenant. What we will say is, you know, this building is going to be co-compliant with the building for fire. And we'll be working with all town officials to make sure what's occurring within that building is consistent with town regulations. If that tenant was to change, we would be back in, back before you with regards to that change of use. So as of right now, the owner, being Glasgow LLC, is sponsoring this application based upon one of its tenants' desires. Short answer is, I do not have the name of that tenant with me at this time.
I think we should know it.
I know that.
I think we should know who the tenant is. I think we should know who the tenant is, name, address, purpose, what they do, before we do any approvals.
Yeah, I, I think that's pretty clear, so if you can just provide some more context for us with that, that would I think be very good, appreciable. Are there any other questions on this, on this item? None. I'll take it back to the board.
Need a motion to close.
If we want to.
If we're gonna.
I'd suggest a motion to continue, because we're asking for more. I would suggest a motion to continue, because we're asking for more information. And we can't get that information officially if we close the hearing.
And you are for the record?
Good evening, Dan Dodds with Associated Builders. I just stepped outside and I called the landlord. The two tenants are insulation machine. And the tenant that is growing into the back is Gallagher Fluid and Seals. And they do the, the rubber product that was mentioning, moving into the back as far as additional storage. Those are the only two tenants in the.
So they've, having done storage existing already, this is just expanding the storage that they've played.
Correct.
That they've already put on the.
Sounds like two different businesses though.
They are.
All right, does anybody have?
In, in that case, I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second. Okay, motion has been made and seconded to close the public hearing. Any further discussion on this motion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Absentions, no, that carries four to zero. Bring it back. Is there another motion?
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
There's been a motion made, seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. That carries four to zero. Thank you. Right, next item I know.
At some point, I just want to remind people of.
Yes.
So the third item under public hearings, there's a request for a continuance, which is case site twenty twenty-two dash zero nine. So I would make a motion to continue that hearing.
Should we make it out of order? Take it out of order?
First, you make the motion to take it out of order.
I'll make a motion to take case site twenty twenty-two dash zero nine out of order.
I'll second that.
Motion has been made and seconded, hearing, if there's any other discussion in this motion? Nope, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, nay. So passes four to zero, so. Would somebody like to make?
You, you need to open the public hearings.
So I need to read it.
Yes.
Case site twenty twenty-two dash zero nine, request for a site plan review. For the construction of approximately eighteen hundred square feet office building with associated parking and driveway. At a combined zero point seven nine plus or minus acre parcel to be recorded, including North Main Street Lot One. Assessors parcel ID thirteen dash nine dash one, three Perv Street. Assessors parcel ID thirteen dash eight dash three, seven Perv Street. Assessors parcel ID thirteen dash seven dash five, Perv Street Lot Six. Assessors parcel ID thirteen dash six dash six, in the commercial zoning district. Applicant Jonathan Siruda, Two Depot Road, Lebret, Mass. Oh one oh five four.
I just want to make one quick disclaimer, with any continuations of public hearings, they do require. Because we do not have our fifth member here this evening, it would require a unanimous four to zero vote to be continued. So just wanted to make that disclaimer or, or approval. So would anybody like to make a motion on this?
When, when is the next meeting?
The next meeting is October fourth.
Make a motion to continue it to October fourth at six PM?
Would we want to keep it within kind of like the public hearings category?
But if we make a motion to do it at six PM, we can do it later. Make a motion to do it later, we have to wait for.
I was wondering more about the date.
So, so just to clarify, our next meeting is October fourth, but we typically don't have public hearings on that, on those dates. And then the second meeting in October would be October eighteenth.
Okay, I'm making, I have my motion to continue it to October eighteenth at six PM.
The COA.
At the COA.
Is there a second on that?
Second.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded to continue this item, any more further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, the abstentions, that carries four to zero. Next item.
Case site twenty twenty-two dash zero seven, request for a site plan review. Construction of warehouse building, associated site improvements at three thirty Chestnut Street. Assessors parcel ID eighteen dash three eight dash zero. On a forty plus three five plus or minus acre lot in the industrial garden district. Industrial Garden Park zoning district. Applicant East Long Meadow Redevelopers LLC, twelve sixty Stelton Road, Spaskaway, New Jersey. Oh eight eight five four.
All right, so we've got a big crowd and I'm sure a lot of comments. So the way, just to give you guys a little picture of how this is set up, obviously, we're on Zoom. These microphones, these two microphones are to enable through the speakers in the room for all of you to hear. The people watching on Zoom also need to have you close to these four little microphones that are up here on the table. Which is why I can't really pass the microphone to the back, I need you to come up and speak at the table. So that you're proximate here, so that everybody who's on Zoom can hear you as well, okay? So I would ask that you come forward, keep your comments. You know, that's up to the chairman of the board, how he wants to run that. But do keep in mind that we want everybody who's here, as well as everybody who is at home. Or who will watch these proceedings later on LCAT, to be able to hear everything that everybody says. That's, I just want you to try to keep that in mind, okay, thank you. Closer the better. So I'll let the applicants start their presentation, just to kind of introduce yourselves for the record.
Yeah, good evening, my, can you hear me?
Yes.
Good evening, my name is Frank Fitzgerald, I'm an attorney with offices at forty-six Center Square in town. I'm here representing East Long Meadow Redevelopers LLC. The owners of three thirty Chestnut Street in town with respect to their application for site plan approval. For the construction of a new facility at the site. Here with me this evening is Joe Marino of M and M Realty and Joe Connelly of M and A Realty. Owners of the, of the property. Also with me is Rob Lebec of our Lebec Associates, Jeff Bandini of McMahon Associates. And Sean McMahon of Jones Lang LaSalle Americas Inc. Who will address the specifics of the proposed facility, traffic and tenant related issues. As you know, this property is located in an industrial area. And for years has been occupied by facilities like the ones being presented to you this evening. The building historically has been operated by such companies as Pratt and Whitney Aircraft and Package Machinery. In fact, Package Machinery purchased the property from the former, from the former Pratt and Whitney Aircraft Plant in nineteen forty-six. From the War Assets Department. As you can see, this area has always been home for warehouse and industrial uses. In an area deemed appropriate, such use by the town of East Long Meadow. The ownership of the property consists of a partnership for the creative, for the purpose of developing this property. The M and A Associates has been a twenty-five year owner of the property and has treated the property with respect and the town with respect. Both of these entities have now formed a partnership, both with established records of creating and owning significant developments. And being mindful of their responsibilities to the community. The town is fortunate to have this partnership willing to make this investment, which will bring significant benefit to the town. On a site which has always been intended for this site type of development. The owners and the town are entitled to the benefits of the existing zoning. Which, subject to your site plan review, allows the building and the uses proposed this evening. You will see from our presentation that the proposed project is appropriate for the zoning. That approval will contemplate that only uses in conformance with the zoning bylaw will be allowed. Also, that traffic generated by the use of the facility would be no more than what would occur if the building as is, was reopened. As it could be, without the need for any further approvals. At this time, I would like to turn the microphone over to Attorney Jane Matt Mantuleski, my co-counsel, who will go through the zoning appropriate for this property.
Good evening, my name is Jane Mantuleski, I'm an attorney at Fitzgerald Law PC at forty-six Center Square in East Long Meadow. And I will be brief, I'm just going to go over a quick review of the zoning at three thirty Chestnut Street. And what uses are allowed there as of right. The property is in the industrial garden park district. And uses as of right allowed on that parcel are as follows. Commercial farms and other agricultural uses, solar farms, schools and childcare facilities, churches. All commercial uses, all industrial uses not considered hazardous or noxious. All warehouse operations, all construction supply establishments, as well as the garaging or parking of any commercial vehicle. If the current owners had wanted to proceed with any of these uses under its current existing footprint. We would not have to be here for any sort of site plan approval, because there would be no change. However, the owners of this parcel, because they have wanted to redevelop this parcel, want to make it better for the town. And want to make a new building, or to develop a new building, we are here seeking this site plan approval from the planning board. Where the use is as of right, as it is here, in the industrial garden park. The site plan review must be approved, cannot be, the planning board does not have the discretionary ability to deny the site plan. However, only reasonable conditions can be attached to the site plan approval. At this point, I will turn it over to Rob Lebec to go over the site plan review application.
Hi, everybody, can you hear me tonight? Great, thank you. So most of you met me at the last public hearing. What we're going to do tonight is I'm going to make a presentation. Go over what I went through at the last public hearing generally, I'll show you what the site plan is all about. Then with me on the design team also here this evening is again Jeff Bandini from McMahon Associates. Jeff has a bunch of traffic information, I'm sure a lot of you have a lot of questions about traffic, what this all means. That's been studied extensively. We'll also talk about the architecture. The architect is here this evening, he can also go through the details of what this building will look like or what we're contemplating. So we'll certainly go through that as well. There'll be a period for each of you to communicate through the chair, so we appreciate. Obviously, everybody understands the process here, but we do appreciate you communicating through the chair. We will respectfully communicate back through the chair, so we appreciate that ahead of time. So back to the site plan, so what you have before you this evening is my layout plan with some color on it. Just to orient everybody to the site, again, Chestnut Street is at the top of the page, my plan is oriented north. This is my north arrow here pointing up, and north is up, okay? The community that you all live in, or most of you live in, is over here on Chestnut Street. It's across a big wetland resource area, as I mentioned, Conservation Commission. We had filed what's called a notice of intent at the Conservation Commission. And at that meeting, you saw that, most of you saw that we were issued what's called, or the actual paperwork is forthcoming. But we were issued what's called an order of conditions, which is essentially a permit for the proposed project. Those resource areas that we have on our property actually provide a great buffer from this property to your property. One of the, I'll get into a lot of the specifics and details of my plans, but I want to kind of go big picture first. So one of the questions that one of the members of your community had for me last time was, could I take our plan and overlay the new and the old? Which I think this graphic will be very helpful. So I do have that tonight. So this is the same layout plan that I was just showing you. Obviously, it's not color for the purposes of showing you the existing structure, so can everybody see the red? I know it's hard. Sure, man. Is there a way to raise the overall screen a little bit?
Man, I can't go too much higher.
I'm going to borrow a book. All right, yes, that's right.
Back, and then we're just, we're not coming on very, poor part of the image.
Can everybody see it a little better now? Is that better, man? You're welcome. So can everybody see the red versus the black? Great, okay, so the black is obviously the proposed, I don't have my color on it, but you see that you have the red outline. So this is the existing outline of the Package Machinery Building. Chestnut Street at the top, the building itself, and probably difficult to see, but it's shown in red. Probably a very faint line for you folks, I apologize. There is a red line here, that it's just consistent with this dark line. That red line is the existing edge of pavement, so there was a lot of question as to where this facility will fall. This basically falls on the same, I don't want to say the same exact, because it's not exact, but almost the same exact footprint that that exists right now. So there is some minor tree clearing, there's a question about that, related to stormwater basins on the west side of the property. But generally speaking, that entire, almost that entire wetlands, actually, the entire wetland system itself, and the buffers there too. Are generally going to be maintained. So in terms of visibility, in terms of what you can expect from a facility being operated here. That is all generally. that is all generally going to be in the same location, generally the same height and a little bit different footprint, I think is fair to say. As you can see the red versus the black, so the rectangle, the big rectangle in the middle is the proposed building, so. Are there any questions for the board at this point? I was going to go through some of the detailed plans and then turn it over to Mr. Bandini, or whatever place is the board at this point.
Does anybody on the board have any question?
At this point, uh, I would prefer.
Just, just to.
I would prefer they finish their presentation before I get to my questions.
Okay, we'll do it like that.
Great, so we have a series of site plans that we can go through in detail. I detailed a lot of the stormwater and all of the other utility information at the last public hearing. But we have a series of parking lots around the building. The north side and the south side are for loading docks, again, for truck trailers, should say, trailer parking. The vehicular areas are on either side of the building, so if those folks are wondering what we're going to have, we actually oriented our building for that very purpose towards Chestnut and, you know, to the south, so that what you'll, what you'll have on the west side and on the east side, adjacent to some other uses as well as adjacent to the community and the wetland resource area, are those pedestrian, I'm sorry, pedestrian and vehicular, sorry, passenger car areas. So those will be passenger cars for the people that work at this facility.
Do you all, did you get on the other side and point?
Sure.
Or just? I apologize, so. This lot, this is, can you see these, okay? Okay, so this lot here is a passenger car lot, okay? So no, no loading docks on the west side of the building at all for the very purpose, purpose of trying to orient this so that it has as much, as little impact, I should say, as possible on the neighborhood. So, these are passenger cars along the bottom, which is the south side. That's where you'll have loading docks, these are loading docks along the south side of the building. These are trailer parking and then maneuver, you know, areas to maneuver back and forth through that, through that. Same thing on the north side, so loading docks, trailer parking, and then a significant birmingham and landscaping along the front so that we can keep, ideally keep as much of this facility minimally visible as possible. So we do, we are proposing that, and I do have some renderings that the architect will go through and show you what exactly we're doing here. That said, all of this side, like I said, is passenger car, you know, all of this side is passenger car. To be clear, there is a loop road that separates the truck traffic from the passenger car traffic on either side. So there will be trucks that go to the south side, obviously. We anticipate that they generally go, they can go in either direction, but we have the two curb cuts here. So depending on where they're coming from and going to, they'll certainly use those two curb cuts that were proposed. So there was a traffic study that was done, so a lot of those questions from the last public hearing, sir, we're gonna, we're gonna finish our presentation and then there'll be an opportunity for people to ask questions. Make sure we go back there, whatever you need. So, based on the last public hearing, there was questions about where trucks will go. So we looked at that as part of our traffic study. Now, the traffic study, there's some questions about the timing of the traffic study coming out. There's an attorney representative group, there was questions about that. The way that the instructions are written on the site plan approval application, it says that the traffic study, if requested by the planning board, should be provided. We obviously hadn't been to the planning board yet, but we were aware that this was likely an item that would come up. We had it in progress, we were able to provide it. We understand that there has not been a lot of time for the planning board or for the members of the public to digest that. We're well aware of that. So, we totally understand that there'll be, need more time for that, but we want to at least let you know that that is available. We do have Jeff Bandini here tonight to discuss all of those circulation patterns, onsite, offsite, curb cuts, entrances that were mentioned, getting in and out of your facility, what can be expected in terms of traffic, you know, how many trucks per minute, we can break it down, we have all of that information. And I'll let Jeff get into that detail, but we want you to know that we've looked long and hard at this. When we get to these public hearings, we've looked at these things for hundreds of hours. So it's not something we haven't looked at, it's not something that we're trying to get past you, we wanna make sure that you have the information. So the planning board does have that, they've had that since, I think, yesterday afternoon or something like that. So, with that, I think what's best, before I get into some of the other detail, while we're on the big picture, because the plans are broken up in so many pages, I think it would make sense to have Jeff go through the traffic. And generally, we have a couple slides for Jeff. And then, if you'd like to see details of the architecture, we'll look at those. If not, we can skip ahead and we can talk about the architecture later on, because I know there's a lot of other questions that people wanna get to, okay? So, I will refer. Okay, so Jeff has three slides, I'll give the mic to Jeff and I'll upgrade.
Thank you, Mr. Board. Evening, everyone. Thanks, Rob, for the introduction. Again, for the record, Jeff Bandini, project manager with McMahon Associates. We were charged with putting together the traffic study for the proposed warehouse project. Rob did a nice introduction of showing you the site plan of the associated entry and access points. And our traffic study was based not only on the location of the proposed driveways, but also the intersection of Chestnut and Shaker Road also, which is signalized and located just east of the project site. So the slide you see in front of you this evening is a comparison of the existing and proposed warehouse that my colleague Jay mentioned wasn't as of right use. If we, if the site were to open again today as an, as a bright use, based on the existing site, five hundred and thirty thousand square feet, that's the number you see in that middle row there, the number of trips that are generated during the weekday morning and weekday afternoon peak hour are about ninety. The proposed warehouse is about five hundred and sixty thousand square feet. And, associated with that, so you're looking at about an extra thirty thousand square feet. And what that essentially comes out to is about a handful of extra trips during the weekday morning and weekday afternoon. And about fifty associated additional trips during the weekday. So that's what we're looking at in terms of additional trips compared to the proposed and existing by rights use. Go to the next slide, Rob.
Sorry, it was delayed.
That's alright.
I think that's it.
That's it, yeah. So, to break this down even further, so this top line is the associated amount of proposed trips based on the proposed site, not taking into account any sort of credit for the existing use. And so we broke this down by passenger vehicles and trucks, I know there's been some concern and some dialogue about the additional heavy vehicles. So what these numbers are based on the Institute of Transportation Engineers Trip Generation Manual, which associates different types of uses with different amounts of total trips to the site. Now, ITE is fortunate enough to break this down for associated warehouse use, knowing the sensitivity of this type of vehicle entering the site, breaks it down by passenger vehicles and trucks. As you can see, each associated weekday morning, weekday afternoon, a total weekday period associates a percentage of trucks during that total time. So as you can see, somewhere in the ten to thirty-five percent range, so there is a fair amount of trucks associated with the total number. However, when you compare the total number of trucks to the associated amount of total vehicles, the number is far less. When you're looking at a proposed total warehouse, we're talking about about ninety trips during the weekday morning and weekday afternoon. And essentially, what, what ends up happening, Rob, if you wanna go to the next slide for me, is we break down the associated amount of entering and exiting trips during both peak hours, both by direction and by entry and exit for the associated site driveways. We're fortunate enough to have the ability to provide the associated entry and exit with at both site driveways to allow full access, meaning vehicles could enter and exit in both turn left and right out of all, out of, excuse me, out of both site driveways, which isn't always the case for a site of this size or of this nature. So we're fortunate enough to be able to distribute the traffic, not only within the study area, which I'll get into momentarily, but between the site driveways themselves, so. Because you, the vehicles have the ability to enter and exit from both site driveways, they'll choose the route that's most convenient or at least congested to them. Meaning if you're coming from the east, you may turn right into the first site driveway. If you're coming from the west, you may turn left into the first site driveway there. And essentially, what that does is breaks up the traffic so that one site driveway is not particularly overloaded when compared to the other. So furthermore, because the site is located about six hundred feet west of the intersection of Chestnut and Shaker, we're able to distribute not only the traffic between the driveways, but direction, directionally as well. And based on logical travel routes and our existing traffic counts, we're able to distribute forty percent of the traffic to the west, twenty percent to the north, twenty percent to the east, and twenty percent to the south. Essentially, what that does is that breaks up the amount of traffic and kind of disengages the load, if you will, of the total traffic on the study area. So essentially, what that does is we measured the amount of strain on the, the site by turning left, so that's associated forty percent, and then sixty percent turning right towards the intersection. Once it gets to the intersection, distributes itself as it sees, as it sees fit in terms of the logical travel routes and existing traffic volumes there. So we're able to distribute that not only between directionality of the study area but the site itself.
Mr. Chairman, I have some questions about the traffic studies. I'd like to, yeah, I'd like to address the traffic, traffic studies since you're, you're up here now.
Of course.
I only got it yesterday, haven't had much chance to dig into it.
Understood.
But a quick reading of it, I feel that the traffic study is fatally flawed. To begin with, it's not accurate. It calls the existing building a warehouse. The existing building is not a warehouse, it's a manufacturing facility. It was built as a manufacturing facility, was used as that by Package Machinery, and the most recent tenant of it was a manufacturer of modular homes. So it was not used primarily as a warehouse, it was primarily used as a manufacturing facility. In addition, you, traffic study says the existing building is five hundred and thirty-two thousand square feet, yet the site plan narrative says it's four hundred and forty-five thousand six hundred, which is.
I can speak to that.
So, we can answer both of those questions. So the first question was related to the use, what, what we looked at is if it was used, existing building was used as a warehouse. We didn't look at the past uses and generate, generating traffic from that. So just, so just so we're clear, just so what we, you're on what we did. The other item is the square footage, so square footage of the, on the site plan approval application, which is for whatever the number was, that is related to the footprint, so that's the footprint. So, that's just a discrepancy based on the footprint versus the actual square footage in the building, which has to do with name and similar story. Thank you.
Well, it's important because you're comparing the, the, the square footage in calculating what you say is the difference in, in, in traffic. However, you say that you, you assert that the existing average daily traffic is eight seventy-eight, but the existing average daily traffic is zero and has been for many years. While traffic on Chestnut Street has increased due to other businesses and residences going in there. So, really, there is no average daily traffic right now, it's zero. So, taking the difference between what you calculate could be there and what you expect from this is, I think.
Huge.
Inaccurate. The other thing that bothers me is it's some very simplistic trip generation study. The manual, in fact, lists at least six different types of warehouse. You chose one fifty, which is straight warehouse. There are at least five other types of warehouse that are on there. We have not been told anything about how this place is gonna be operated. Looking at the footprint and looking at aerial photography of other very, very similar facilities, this looks like it's gonna be a cross dock facility. The ITE does not list any estimates of traffic for cross dock facilities. If you look at photographs of cross dock facilities and you see the long lines of trucks lined up getting in and out of them, I think that the numbers that you're generating here are way off, and you need a much more detailed study of this. Also, you talk about weekdays, this is gonna be operating twenty-four seven. So we're gonna have trucks going in and out there all night long. And that is an impact that you had not addressed at all, and I wonder if you could talk about that a little bit?
I'll answer your first question if I would. As far as the comparison of the previous use, that's only to illustrate the impact of the as of right use. That wasn't taken into consideration in terms of projecting the traffic onto the adjacent study area. That was simply done for a comparison for the as of right use. When we used the numbers that you see in front of you, these are the numbers that went into the projection on the study area, the Shaker Road and Chestnut Street intersection of the site driveways use these numbers that you see in front of you. They did not use the numbers in the, in the previous slide, which had the bottom line, which had a minimal amount of traffic, you know, four or five extra trips. The numbers that were put into the study are these numbers in the top row. So in terms of trying to, attempting to be conservative with the amount of traffic added to the study area, these numbers were used, we weren't taking any sort of liberties with comparing apples to oranges in terms of traffic that had been there in the past in terms of taking credit for that. We're certainly, we're certainly sensitive to that, and that's why we did it with your following approach. To answer your second question, ITE does have very, does have a few different lane use codes. Some of them are very specific as to the type of use that it is here. In terms of, without knowing the end user for which we are applying the site to, it's, it would be difficult to assign a certain value to those without knowing what that specific end user would be. Therefore, the lane use code one fifty has been the widely accepted lane use code for a facility of this type. It's based on numerous studies of this size, of this location, based on this size. So, based on, on that methodology, that information seems to be consistent with what would be used on other projects. To answer your third question, we look, when we say weekday twenty-four seven, we're sensitive to that. We understand we don't want traffic, you know, coming in at all hours of the night and having impacts on levels of service and things of that nature. And that's why we demonstrated the weekday morning and weekday afternoon. As you can see, there is a concentration of, you know, percentage of trucks during the, the full day, we certainly understand that. Given the impact negatively on the amount of associated additional delay, we would certainly be looking at the amount of traffic that would come during the weekday morning, weekday afternoon peak, when other folks would be traveling to and from work, to and from school, et cetera. And the demonstrated impact of those trucks, at least on a delay, from a delay perspective, would not be as impactful during other hours.
I still think it's very simplistic analysis. You admitted that you don't know who's gonna be operating this place. You don't know how they're gonna operate it. You don't know that they're not going to maximize the number of trucks going in and out to maximize the use of the facility. You haven't addressed the possibility of being used as a cross dock facility. The reason I'm so insistent on this and why I'm so concerned about it is that you come up with a very precise nine twenty total trips. That's a nice number. If that was only seventy-two trips more, you'd trigger an ENF, okay? And you, and the environmental notification form. So, it looks rather suspicious that we pick a number that gets us just under the threshold. And I find that very concerning, especially since we don't know who's going in.
So just to clarify, there's a couple items we'd like to clarify for you. First of all, we have Sean McMahon to talk about the building and talk about how this is not a cross dock facility and why it's not a cross dock facility. That's one item. Again, back to the, the comparison of the traffic. We're comparing if we were to flip the switch on the building and turn the lights on, that it's a by right use for warehouse, that's all we were saying. We need, we need to be very clear here that this is something that we're proposing for their use, not something that you're anticipating, you know, in a cross dock facility, that's not the case. So Sean will be able to talk to that.
Rob, I think you just said it quickly.
Yeah, before you get into the use of the building, so on, on the traffic study, so I did go through it. So, there's a couple of concerns that I had. So, within the traffic study, you said that you spoke to someone at the town and they don't anticipate any future development in that immediate area. Well, less than six months ago, there's a potential developer in Deer Park who wants to bring in. Well, less than six months ago, there's a potential developer in Deer Park who wants to bring in what could be a state-approved commercial recycling facility, which is going to bring in a hundred trucks a day, which is going to go down Shaker Road and they're going to have to get out of town somewhere. So I don't know who you spoke to, but that was a flat-out mistake. So that needs to be potentially calculated. The other interesting thing was I saw the ratings of the intersection, and I think they were at level C, but with all the additional truck traffic, it was downgraded to a level D from A to F. So there was nothing in there on how you could potentially rectify that. So at least the intersection doesn't get worse. We would prefer to see it get better. So that's another comment. And then the third thing that just scares the absolute, you know what, out of me is if you can go back to the intersection and show the amount of traffic, because you said so much went north, so much went south, so much went east, so much went west. Well, if you come out of that facility and you hang a left, you're going right into the rotary.
That's right.
And this town adopted a master plan last year, and a major focus of the master plan was no additional traffic in the rotary.
Address the hill on Chestnut Street.
Show us anything on how you could potentially avoid that at a minimum. But so that's kind of what I took out of the traffic.
Additionally, twenty percent of the traffic going up Chestnut Street in the middle of winter, not going to happen. It's a really, really steep hill. You have trouble with cars getting from the intersection up the first part of the hill. There's no way trailer truck traffic is going to be able to access that at any time during the winter, along with the twenty percent going to the.
Tommy, forty percent problem.
I address the commentary.
Sure.
As far as the um traffic study is concerned, there was a section in the report about potential mitigation, about adjusting the traffic signal timing at that location. Post occupancy to, um, and our preliminary showed that the no build facility could be achieved by adjusting the signal timing at that location. Again, we would look to to work with the with the town to address that post occupancy. As far as the contact of the town, I'd be happy to share that information with you. So that's obviously something we don't want to miss. But no, we like to try to keep detailed records of who we spoke to and when we spoke to them so that these numbers could be accounted for.
That would be helpful.
So that we don't run into situations such as this. We like to to be, uh, you know, uh, omniscient in terms of the amount of traffic that's being added. We like to account for that so that we can mitigate. It's not something we try to hide. It's something we try to account for because, again, we don't want to get in situations such as this or discussions with peer reviewers, et cetera, about additional work that might be necessary because of something that that we may have overlooked. In terms of the distribution of the site, certainly, we would be able to discuss that in terms of coming up with conditions for the board. We simply came up with our trip distribution based on logical travel routes and where vehicles to and from the facility would want to and how to travel to the site based on the existing road system. Certainly, we would, you know, be happy to discuss what that means in terms of additional load on the roadway network. If it means no left turns out of the site and more traffic goes towards the intersection, you know, maybe that's something that we can discuss as well. You know, we did have a section there about mitigation. Certainly, we could look at what other items might be required in order to achieve that reasonably.
I'm all for fixing the blight that exists now. This seems to be overboard to me. Forty percent of the traffic, forty percent of the traffic going down to the left is a lot, Chestnut Street. And then you have the intersection down there. Then you have Converse Street and Long Meadow. Yeah, Long Meadow is not East Long Meadow, but we're a community, and I hate to throw that on them. I just don't see it benefiting anybody. I would, I would be very interested in seeing requirements of maybe sixty percent of the traffic using Shaker Road and mitigation, some sort of mitigation brought forward for the town when that road deteriorates. Because that's what's going to happen. But it's certainly not all that more difficult to get on Shaker Road and access ninety-one than it is to go through Long Meadow. It's going to pile up Long Meadow. It'd be terrible. The intersection at Maple Street and Industrial Drive, and then down where everybody enters down to the highway on Route Five in Long Meadow, it's already bad. Like I said, I'm for development, for something that's reasonable.
We understand. And and like I said before, it's, you know, based on logical travel routes. If if the town feels differently about what's best in terms of the 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 routes to and from the facility, we'd be happy to have those discussions.
I think that's the major discussion.
I I also have a difficulty with your comparing the existing building with the proposed building strictly on a square foot basis. The existing building has something between five and ten loading docks. The new building is something like a hundred. So to say that uh the current building could handle eighty percent of what the new building is going to handle is is ridiculous. And it it just, I can't believe it. Okay? I don't see any way that the current building can handle eight hundred and seventy-eight trucks a day. It is, it's not possible. So making that comparison and saying that the increase in traffic between this and reuse the existing building is only a few trips, I think, is uh takes us to be pretty naive.
Yeah, I mean, my my biggest concern, what I did see is I unfortunately did not have a lot of time to look at this, being that it was only yesterday and some of us, you know, have, you know, day job. My day job's been pretty busy the last few days. But my my chief concern is, you know, the mitigation. I mean, you're talking about, I mean, you know, correct me if I'm wrong, but I mean, this building as proposed could be set up to house four different businesses or just one or maybe just two or something of that nature. Again, correct me if I'm wrong. So, you know, you're talking about multiple different businesses. You know, there could be multiple different uses of the warehouse, different products, you know, different, different things of that nature. And, you know, we are very close to, you know, to get to ninety-one, you got to go through Long Meadow. You got to go through Enfield. And, you know, there's residents that live on those streets. So I think trying to uh understand what that mitigation is, I think, would be a heck of a lot more helpful. And and what it is, it's, we're going from zero to a hundred, basically. That's, that's really ultimately what it comes down to, just to echo what everybody else has been saying. But I want to let you continue on with your presentation. So those are just my quick thoughts.
I'd just be happy to take additional questions at this time. That's enough to run for the continuation on the site.
Thanks. Uh, we do have sound here this evening. I'd like to him to speak a little bit to the facility itself. So I just want to tell the public how we're going to do this. I think we're going to continue. If there's any other questions and any other information you'd like to add, then we will open up the public hearing. What I would just preface with that to begin with, just keeping it, I know there's a lot of people that are interested in this, just keeping it concise. And if, you know, people are repeating themselves, just, you know, keep it to kind of unique issues. So, you know, and issues aren't discussed by by resident, sort of just like that, just to be mindful of everybody's time. But we're going to start just with any other more information.
Great. I'm going to kick it over to Sean, just to answer Mr. Kingston's question.
We're gonna, we're gonna start that that, you know,
You have to wait.
in a few minutes.
Just to answer Mr. Kingston's question regarding the ENF. So you had mentioned that the the traffic numbers look dangerously close to any ENF filing. So you also are required under to trigger VIPA. You have, you need a state permit, and you also need to trip a a threshold. So we do not have a state permit. So regardless of where our traffic numbers fall, we don't have a state permit. So at this point, we don't trigger any ENF.
The threshold is a thousand.
I'm sorry. Yes, but but you cannot just have a threshold. It's also, you're required to have a state permit or public funding from the state.
That's in, sorry.
It's in the MIPA regs.
That that's in three, uh, free tenant, is it? That's the number I have here.
Yeah, it's in the, it's in the applicability section of the MIPA regs.
I can find my, my printout here.
And three, three one CMR eleven?
If that's the MIPA threshold, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. I can, I can, I can show you after the meeting.
Or perhaps if we continue the hearing, the hearing, you can show us then.
Yes, exactly. So, Sean, thank you.
Good evening, Sean McMahon. JOL, I've been a commercial real estate broker for over thirty years, been working on industrial properties most of my life. So this group has put a lot of time and effort into designing this facility, and I just wanted to address Mr. Kingston, Kingston's concern about a cross dock facility. This facility is over five hundred feet deep. Generally, it's not intended to be a cross dock facility. We likely are going to get either two to four particular tenants. This is a five hundred and sixty thousand square foot facility. The likelihood of finding one single tenant for it is is not uh is not great, and we intended it to be a multi-tenant facility, and that could not be a cross dock facility. It's not intended to do that. So I don't think you're going to get the traffic generation that that you're concerned about.
And why do they have all the loading docks?
Just, hold on, hold on.
No, just from a cross dock facility. I'm trying to address that particularly.
So can you explain across term?
Yeah, can you explain, I think, to the public just perhaps what a cross dock is, just kind of like a general definition?
Yeah, so, so a cross dock facility, the intent is for product to come into a facility, multiple trucks, they offload into it, and then the product is delivered on the other side, and then it goes back out. It's regarded, the product is not stored in a cross dock facility. This is a warehouse. So product will come in, it'll be stored, and then distributed, uh, you know, in future days or weeks to the to the local area.
So like a cross dock, just kind of get a better understanding. So it's more of a short term, a day, a two, a few hours?
It's actually a few hours, two hours. Yeah. And then much, much less depth on a cross dock facility with with docks on both sides. And again, this is not intended, is not designed to be a cross dock facility.
Uh, just as a comment, um, I'm looking at aerial photography of an Amazon cross dock facility in Joliet, Illinois, which looks very much like the footprint of this building.
If if a a building is designed like this, it's very unlikely that it is a cross dock facility. Even Amazon doesn't bring in product and immediately distribute it. They bring it into the facility, they store it, and then it is distributed out to the to the regional market.
Amazon specifically has facilities that are designated as cross dock facilities. And the one I'm looking at aerial photography of in in Joliet, Illinois is a cross dock facility as designated by Amazon, and it looks extremely much like this building.
I can tell you that we don't have any tenants designated for this facility. This is being built without any tenants in mind, and this group will build and we will keep, we will go out to the market and try to find tenants for the facility. There's nothing in mind.
Doesn't work.
So if you want to continue on with any more information?
If you have any other questions, I'm happy to answer about the the configuration or, you know, the design of this facility.
Does the board have some more questions before we open it up to the?
Just real quick. So there's been some discussion about the the height of the building. So can you address the height of the building for the people in the audience? Yeah.
We have Rick Pratt here. He's the architect. And I'll let him do that, and I'll bring some graphics up.
My name is Rick Pratt. I'm the owner of Pratt Design Studio. We prepared these drawings. So these are the elevations. The building is forty-five feet high. That would be forty foot inside, forty-five outside, and that's just to the underside of the steel. Then the building itself is concrete panels in a in a decorative patterning to break up the facade. This is the the north is on the the top, so it's the the north. So that's along Chestnut. And then the south is the other side. And this shows, um, if you look on, on each end, there's an entrance in both cases. So there's four entrances and this 3D view here is a is generally what each entrance will look like. There's a, go to the and I guess it's the shoot for the.
There is, sorry.
Anyway, um, Rob wrote up the the plan, but this this is mine. Basically, um, if you kind of look at this as the rectangle that Rob had four top left is, or top is north. So this top left view is what you will see in the top left corner of the plan. This is so coming from the west along Chestnut, this is what you will see on the corner. The other corner, coming from the east. And then the bottom 3D view there is back of the building on the the west, and then the anomaly entrance because that corner in the the bottom right or in the the southeast has got a little bit of an angle on it. So there's, there's five pink colors. There's a a general color, which is just a kind of off-white, a dark blue strip across the top and kind of framing the entrances, and then a medium blue to define the entrance. So if someone tenant number one is trying to give directions, they'll say our entrance is around to the left, look for the blue. This is really an identifying way to to guide people in a dark gray. So there's glass, which is each entrance has, you know, the assumption that, not the assumption, but the intent of office. So the corner has some some glass at the entrance. There's there's windows on either side for offices. Potentially, a mezzanine could be built. We're not saying that there is one. It's just allowable. It is that it would allow a tenant to have offices a little bit higher. Wouldn't be, you know, it's not the whole facade. It's just kind of in the corner if they wanted to have uh some space a little higher with some windows. And then the windows around either side, the higher windows are windows for the people that work inside the warehouse. So they'll, they'll be able to see the sky and whether it's raining or not.
So I just have a a specific question. So coming uh on Chestnut Street toward the intersection of Shaker and Chestnut, you go past the fields of Chestnut, based upon the current topography and the vegetation, would the people who currently reside in that residential area be able to see the warehouse? I can, I can speak to that.
I only grabbed the mic because Rick's not from the area. Uh, he did the building. So there's, as mentioned, there's a large, Jeff, can you get me back to the other site plan? There's a large wetland area. So if people are heading, yes, it's going to be eastbound on Chestnut. This large vegetated area not only exists where this dark green is, but it also extends on to the is it this field that you're saying? It extends on to their property. There's a large wetland. It extends on to their property, there's a large wetland on their property here, there's some units there about here, and then it wraps around, there's a few, there's a cul-de-sac here where my hand is, and about right here. So from the residential property, I would say no. I would say from the entrances to their facility, I'm sorry, to their community, I would say no. We can confirm that for you, but I don't see that this, actually, this entrance that we're proposing, this came up during conservation, is about fifty feet farther to the east than the existing entrance. So if you can't see it now, you won't see it then. So.
Thank you.
Thanks. So do we have any other questions for the board? Can we just, everybody, uh, are there any other questions for the board before I open it up to the?
I'd like to ask whether you've considered, uh, the, uh, air quality issues around having up to a hundred and thirty some odd tractor trailers on the site. You're less than a quarter mile from the high school playing field. How will this have, what impact is this likely to have on, uh, air quality in the area?
Air quality has not been studied.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Uh, hearing no other questions from the board, I'm gonna open the public hearing. So how I would like this to work, Attorney Pillip, you can start out first, just because you are representing the, uh, Fields of Chestnut, uh, Association, and then I will open it up to the rest of the public. But again, as I said earlier, just, um, you'll have to speak in the microphone, if you can just identify yourselves and your, your address, um, for the record, um, and then just, again, if, if multiple people are kind of saying the same things. Uh, there's also the sign and sheet is up there, if you can, um, after your.
Right, I could come up and sit down. Are they gonna remain here or?
No.
I'd actually, they're coming back. The public.
Yep, they can, they can get up, yes, so that the, any, yeah, member of the public can sit down.
They can, and I can, and then I can sign up.
Yes, so the sign up sheet should be right there, um, so just so that our records can, you know, sure. And then I would like all, if there's questions to the applicant, just through the chair, just to keep with procedure, so, um, but I will start with Attorney Pillip, what number do you?
I'm, I'm just signing in, and given the number of people who are here and the interest of time, while I'm signing in, I just want to say that we, we weren't able to print the memorandum that I emailed to you. So if anybody wants that memorandum, my email address is mpill@verizon.net. M is in Mary, P is in Peter, I L L at Verizon.net. It's a twenty-two page memorandum with about a fifteen page, um, addendum, an investigative journal article on Amazon, uh, facilities, and I think that'll save us a lot of time. You all got it, and knowing you all, you've, you've, you've read it, you've considered it.
I got it about, we got it about five hours ago, so I.
And I apologize.
That's, that's all right. So I haven't had personally the opportunity, and I'm not sure if the room's support house.
Well, at least, at least you can, go ahead, Mr.?
Oh, I was just gonna say, you could also reach out to the Planning and Community Development Department, um, Bailey Mitchell, Planning Director, um, and also we will include the memorandum within the minutes as well.
Okay, and so what that means is, in the interest of time, I'm not going to, you know, go through what I've already written, okay? You've got it, and if you haven't had a chance to read it, you will be able to read it. And if anybody out here wants to know what was in that, and a lot of work went into it, what I'd like to do then, um, again, since I haven't had a lot of time to look at this, and I haven't, um, I'm not an engineer, but I've earned all of my gray hair, one strand at a time, both representing developers and opposing, um, developers. I, I am struck by the sophistication. This is the first time I've seen a planning board, a lay planning board on their own, raise I T E Institute of Traffic Engineer categories. And.
Exactly correct.
And what it does is it shows the fundamental flaw, aside from all the legal issues, in what the applicant is trying to do here. They include one fifty is a warehouse, and I don't doubt that Levesque and McMahon Associates, that's all they've been told, and that's all they know. I've worked with them, in fact, I'm working with them right now on another project. I know them to be competent, experienced, experts of integrity. In my book, that's what you call the beard, the people you send out front to try to persuade the decision makers who probably genuinely don't know what's going on. But the problem is, those other I T E Institute of Traffic Engineer categories in the numbers in the one fifties, what they make clear is, in order to do a traffic study, you have to know how this facility is going to be used. You can't simply call it a warehouse. For example, at least one of those I T E categories that Mr. Kingston referred to, you run those numbers, you're gonna get traffic at least two to, I think, two point five, two point six times what category one fifty will get you. So there's no way they can even do a traffic study until the, the gentleman, you know, who are behind them really share with us. And if they don't have, um, tenants, uh, and they want us to believe they're gonna put up five hundred thousand square feet on spec, they need to go out and commit themselves to how they are going to, to, um, to use this. Another point that I missed, we're all human, that Mr. Denver raised, the application materials before you simply dismiss the town's master plan and claim it's not applicable, okay? That obviously is incorrect. That's in addition to the points I raised, and the distinguished attorney, um, Mr. Fitzgerald's associates missed a rather fundamental point when she tried to tell you warehouse, she omitted wholesale. So unless they can commit themselves to number one, a wholesale warehouse, which means only for retailers, not for the general public, which lets out Amazon, Target, and a whole lot of other uses, and it's primarily storage, they're not within the category they're claiming. The only, I'd just like to take a minute and go through my notes, because there are a couple of points. Oh, yeah, and I'm glad they left this up there. When you compare the number of trips with category one fifty gets you, and I've only had a limited time to research based on the traffic study, but the number of loading docks is dependent upon, number one, the square feet and how it's going to be used. For example, if this was really and truly going to be a primarily storage warehouse, which is all the zoning allows, then you would have one loading dock, as I, as I understand it, we're gonna need experts, you know, to, to study this in more detail, so this is preliminary. You would need one loading dock for every ten to twenty thousand square feet, half a million square feet, twenty-five to fifty loading docks. They've got a hundred loading docks, one for every five thousand square feet. That simply doesn't fit with primarily storage. This plan apparently was given to the architect or Levesque, it comes from somewhere. This plan, like any modern warehouse, has to be designed for a specific type of use, and they have so far not disclosed what that is. And this board, I respectfully commit, can't approve it without it. Yes, as the attorney said, it's nondiscretionary, but you have to have the information in order to base a decision, or I would respectfully submit, you cannot approve it. Okay, let me just take. Another problem is the number of parking spaces. When you look at the numbers in the traffic study, and you consider we've got a hundred loading docks, and I'm not sure how many hundreds of tractor trailer parking spaces, that simply doesn't fit with the category one fifty, okay? We have to have a picture of the traffic that's going to match the physical layout that's been put before it. And I think that's, in the interest of brevity, because I suspect a lot of people, oh, the bike trail, what impact is the traffic gonna have on the bike trail? And that's just a question that nobody has looked at. Okay, um, extremely unlikely this will be a cross dock. You know, well, um, we don't need extremely unlikely, we need a firm binding commitment in writing to you showing what this will be used for, then we need a traffic study based on that, and then we can get down to brass tacks. Okay, uh, there's a lot more, but in the interest of brevity, I'm gonna let other people talk. Thank you very much.
Yes, sir. I'd like you to reconsider one point they've made.
Okay.
That a developer cannot put up a spec building without this board knowing who's gonna go in there. We do this all the time. We, if someone puts up a spec medical building, we don't know what type of doctor or dentist or psychiatrist is gonna go in there. We permit a restaurant. We don't know what type of restaurant or who owns it or what it's going to be. So I'd like you to reconsider your comment.
I, I will, and I thank you, sir, for pointing out an error, and I apologize, because the issue, for example, in the examples you used, you know it's going to be a medical office, you know it's going to be a restaurant. You may not know who's going in there, but you know the type.
That's all I'm pointing to.
And you are exactly correct, and I apologize for my error. It's not who is going in there, it's what is the specific type of use that we need to know? And then, once they make that commitment, then you can make a decision, and then whoever they wanna get. For example, Amazon, if, and I'm just pulling examples.
All set.
Thank you, sir. Bye-bye.
Thank you. So what I will do, I think, to make it easy, if, uh, those who want to speak maybe can form a line, and, um, I don't know how many want to speak, but, um, and then we'll sort of go like that.
What, no followers?
Just to make it, uh, organized, um.
May I go?
Uh, yes, thanks.
My name is Mary Hurley. I'm a resident of Fields of Chestnut, have been there for thirteen years. I'm sorry.
Yep. Oh, you got a lot to.
I'm trying to write and talk at the same time.
So we can give you a second.
My name is Mary Hurley. Uh, I am also an attorney, but I don't practice in this area, and now I know why. I also want to thank the members of the board for the time that they've taken here and for your service in general. There's a lot of folks, including myself, who consider their home the most important and valuable possession that they're ever gonna own. There's, my father was also a lawyer. He had a saying that figures don't lie, liars figure. And in terms of what the truth is and how we get at the truth, I'm firmly convinced it's not gonna be done at this meeting. Um, I would agree with everything that was said by Mr. Kingston, um, in terms of the flaws that exist in the, um, traffic study, including the fact that, uh, a major, um, proposal at Deer Park is gonna have an extreme impact. I think that we have certainly noise pollution to consider, air pollution and air quality to consider, uh, and the traffic is going to be a nightmare. It's a nightmare now, in terms of what can be done to, um, remediate some of the issues. If it was agreed that Chestnut Street would not be used for ingress or egress to that facility, that would go a long way. Why do we need, um, an entrance over there? Why do we need the ability of these diesel trucks? And I do say diesel with disgust, because it smells like hell. Why do we need a pack, a traffic pattern in there that allows them to go around where all the vehicles, not the trucks, are parked, to go in or out? That's the noise pollution we're concerned with. There's another soccer field or a field that's, that's allowed by Lennox. We got little kids over there, soccer players, all different kinds of sports going on there. That's another issue that wasn't raised tonight. We need, um, an alternative. You've got an industrial park right down the street on Benton. If they were required to, if they come that way to go through Benton to get to Shaker and avoid Chestnut entirely, that will go a long way to help matters. And you're right about that hill on Chestnut in the winter, absolutely right about it. There is certainly, uh, if you want to spec a building, that's okay. But you, as a board, and we as citizens of East Long Meadow, are entitled to know what type of storage that's gonna be used for. And I'd rather hear it upfront and have them commit to it than to make promises. Mr. McMahon is now, um, part of, uh, a much longer conglomerate, what was the name of it? Huh? Bowman. I don't think he is here as a possible owner. I think he's here representing whoever the real owners are. And will the real owners please stand up?
Hey, Joe.
Okay. It's not Mr. McMahon. All right? And we haven't heard from them. If, if, if there's a way to avoid using Chestnut, Shaker is much more, and Benton are much more, uh, likely to be used to traffic and have the kind of cuts and, and street widens that allow for trucks to get through there. It's, it's an industrial use. I could go on, but I know there's a lot of people who want to say things, who are probably smarter than me, but the other thing is, they've got all these plans for day. They can operate twenty-four hours a day. How about they give some concessions on, they're only gonna operate between, uh, eight and, and eight? We have, we gotta sleep, we gotta, we gotta do a lot of different things, um, and I, and to have to smell that stench or listen to those trap, trucks, um, is not what I planned for my retirement years. So I thank you for listening, um, and, uh, I will probably put some more comments in writing.
So before you leave, Mayor Hurley?
Yes.
It's a pleasure to have a former Springfield mayor in East Long Meadow.
It's also a pleasure to have, um, Russ Denver here, who has spent so many years, um, doing the right thing.
So we are.
Hundred percent, thank you as well, Mr. Kingston.
I guess I have a basic question for you. So if you don't want any truck traffic down Chestnut, and you want to move it all to Shaker, tell me what you do with the people at Greatwoods?
No, no.
They're, they're right there. They would bear the brunt of all the additional, and I, and I'm not saying one way or the other, but I'm questioning, then you, you shove all that traffic down Shaker, and Greatwoods gets stuck with all of that. So is there another way?
I, I think somebody from Greatwoods would love to answer that question.
I'm sure they would.
I, you know.
I'm questioning you.
Right.
As a resident of Chestnut, wanting to shove traffic down in one area instead of potentially everybody sharing in the misery.
But we're not, we're getting overly burdened. Okay, according to their numbers, whether they're fiction or not, I don't know, but we're getting forty percent, and everybody else gets twenty here and twenty there. And.
Okay.
The people in Greatwoods, I hope some of them are here and can respond. But I think it's, it's different in impact in the sense that they're way up on top of a mountain, and we're way down here where that prep diesel smell is gonna be, and the noise is gonna be. So, um, the proximity, I think, is, is something.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm John Power. I live at, um, Fields of Chestnut, and I had some specific questions more for the presenters. First off, what is the planned overall?
Through the chair.
I'm sorry, I want to know, first off, and I'll ask you, what is the planned overall height of the proposed building compared to the current building? compared to the current building?
The proposed side of the building is 45 feet. There's an existing portion of the building, higher portion towards the Chestnut Street condominiums. That's 60 feet. So we're, we're less than existed. Thank you.
To clarify, 45 feet above street level?
Forty-five feet above the floor elevation of the building, which is, I believe, slightly above street level, but consistent with the existing footprint. So the elevation of the existing footprint is approximately two 17 or 18. And my proposed finished floor for split pairs is, I don't have any to split, but is about 220. So similar.
Next question. The proposal calls for complete demolition of the existing building. I'd like to know what plans are for the disposal of that material.
That, that work is being done by, was formerly being done by O'Reilly, Talbot and Oaken. There's a consultant that is currently working, LSP, Licensed Site Professional, that's working on the demo, demo plans. There's a hygienist that has and will continue to go through the building part of that demo. There's a number of LSP related issues that have to be addressed as that building is demolished. So Licensed Site Professional. It's an environmental consultant that's hired. They have a registration and they have very specific criteria that they have to follow when dealing with the environmental issues, you know, contamination or any, any types of issues that way.
So to clarify, to clarify, will the refuse from demolishing the existing building be completely removed from that site or would any of it remain on the site?
That's a good question. I'm not an LSP, but I am familiar with a permit called a BUD. It's a beneficial use determination. So I believe that there's certain types of materials that can be utilized. I would like to stop there, confirm with the LSP, because I'm not one, and just determine what, what potential materials could potentially be reused as opposed to trucked off site.
Yeah, I would echo that. I think it would be a good idea to just get a more in-depth kind of specific look at what these materials, you know, who knows what's in there. So.
Happy to do that.
Definitely.
All right. The last question I had goes back to their traffic study. And in particular, if they were able to bring back the illustration that showed 40% going to the west, 20% and so on. Thank you, Tom. I don't have any hairs to split.
What do we want to look at?
I think the out, were the percentages of the, the outflows.
There you go.
Thank you. So my question is, if 40% is expected to go in the westward direction, that's heading to the intersection of Chestnut Street and White Road. Having read the traffic study myself, why was the impact at that intersection not at all discussed in the traffic study? I believe that there's a potential for a much greater traffic impact at that intersection. And from what I read in the traffic study, that intersection at Dwight Road was not even addressed.
Hand this to Jeff. Certainly, all, all the items that were raised tonight, we are happy to look at. We understand, as requested by the opponent's attorney, that there's likely, you know, an additional look, independent look at this. So we're happy to, you know, take notes and address these items. But I'll hand that to Jeff. He may have looked at that.
Thanks, Rob. In terms of demonstrating the impact on the surrounding areas, it's a little bit of a chicken and the egg argument. You can't study a intersection before you know what the impact of the site is. So we scoped our area based on the side driveways, obviously, because that's the primary access to egress. And also because of the proximity of Chestnut and Shaker as well. So if there are further intersections as a result of our considerations from the original study, we'd be happy to, to look at. And look into the additional traffic that may be impacted elsewhere.
He basically said, we're happy to look at that.
Yeah, I, I think that would be a good idea. I mean, you know, not just Dwight, but those that live on the Cut Through Marshall Street. Somebody lives there. So I think that would be another good question.
Might add to that. Long Meadow has concerns also. People, trucks turn left down Benton from places and turn right onto Wolf Swamp, which is not at all capable of handling tractor trailers. So, you know, truck drivers follow GPS. They don't follow their brains all the time. And getting lost in the streets of Long Meadow is a real concern, I know, for the Long Meadow Planning Board. I happen to know that because I have discussed this with the chair of the, not the chair, but a member of the Long Meadow Planning Board, Walter Gunn.
I'm all set. Thank you. Sir, thank you.
I'm Jerry Sletty. I work, live at 385 Chestnut Street. I just got a couple of questions. Obviously, I haven't talked about what they're doing with the building. But with, looks like 300 employees, according to the car traffic study, looks like it's going to be a processing and distribution center for Amazon, not necessarily a cross stock because you're not going to have a 50-foot ceiling for a cross stock. So you need to understand that if that's the case during peak seasonal times, that traffic could be a two or three times fold because of Christmas and holidays. So you got to take that into consideration also. And the other question is, if it's going to be one of those, is it going to be residential delivery out of there like Amazon does? Those are my questions.
Thank you.
So there's, there's no tenants identified in the buildings. We know who's going to go there. But it will conform to the zoning uses that are allowed on the site. And, you know, I, I will make a comment about Amazon as well, that they, you know, they have cut way back on their development. They've developed over seven lanes per feet in this park itself. And we don't anticipate Amazon taking this facility.
But if it's going to be a distribution center, you're going to have a lot of employees in there. And there's going to be peak seasonal volumes. That'll be a two or three times X increase in traffic flow and employees at the site. That has to be considered for that whole intersect, all those intersections. Thank you.
Just to clarify quickly, Mr. McMahon is not from McMahon Associates. There was some question before.
Put on my glasses. Get old. My name is Roland Bolduc. I'm a resident of Smith Avenue in East here in East Long Meadow. I'm also a professional truck driver, safe truck driver for over 38 years. And if there's one thing I know, it's the movement of trucks. It's the logistics of large vehicles and on communities. What they're not showing you in this map is when you come out of their site and you take a right and then another right onto Shaker Road, that is almost an impossible turn.
Exactly.
Without impacting other traffic coming the other way on Shaker Road. A 53-foot-long trailer, which will be coming into this facility, now has a sleeper unit, meaning a very large tractor attached to it. These vehicles, on average, approximate 75 feet long. When you go and make the turn from Chestnut onto Shaker, it's not easy. It's not safe. The intersection cannot handle 20% of over 180 trucks day and night. They're showing you in the AM 90-something trucks and the PM 90-something trucks. That's approximately 200 trucks. When the residents of Chestnut start filing suit and get the trucks refused from going down their street after a certain time, which happens in all communities, I have to deal with it as a professional truck driver. I cannot go down these streets at certain times. Where's that traffic going to go? Down Shaker Road. It's the easiest access to go down Shaker Road, down Elm Street to get onto 91. As far as climbing Chestnut Street that you spoke about, the hill, yes, to climb. What about that hill to come down? These trucks, on average, they can hold and weigh up to 80,000 pounds. On average, they haul 74,000 pounds, stay under that. So 74,000 pounds coming down Chestnut Street, that's one truck. How many more are going to come down Chestnut Street? Because if they're coming in from Route 84, they might come down 190. You don't know. They might come down 190 and try to come up 83 and down Chestnut. Who wants to be at that intersection when they turn onto Chestnut from Route 83? I don't want my family there. I've seen over the road truck drivers. I am a local driver within the area. I know the area very, very well. And when they're not going to be allowed to go down Chestnut, that other 40%, when they're not using their brain, they're using their GPS and they don't know the surrounding area. They're going to come out of this site, take a right, come up to the intersection, and the GPS is going to say, turn left. And they're all going to come into a rotary with a 75-foot-long vehicle weighing 74,000 pounds to one of the most dangerous intersections in the Guinness Book of Records. One thing I also know about professional truck drivers, there's something that the Federal Motor Carrier Safety Administration administered with the Federal Motor Carrier Safety Regulations. It's called hours of service. Drivers are allowed to drive 11 hours a day. I don't run 11 hours myself, but I'm allowed to. It's legal. I can work 14 hours a day, as long as you don't drive over 11. Then I have to take 10 hours off duty. The vehicles coming in will need a place to sleep. When they sleep, how are they going to remain warm? How are they going to remain cool? The engine's wrong. And if they're abiding by the Environmental Protection Agency's rules in the state of Massachusetts, they cannot idle more than five minutes. So they're going to be using something called an APC all along. It's a unit that runs and keeps the vehicle warm or cool. Fantastic. And then in the morning, they're going to start up a very cold diesel engine. And the blue smoke is going to come out of these vehicles. And if you've ever seen diesel smoke on a cold day, it hovers at about 10 to 15 feet. And it just stays there. And it just moves around its neighborhood at 10 to 15 feet on a cold winter day. Summertime, they like air conditioning as well. Most of them do not abide by the five-minute rule because they're not from Massachusetts. They're from elsewhere. So these vehicles are going to run and run day in, day out. It's not just about the traffic. The environmental hazard, by the way, we didn't do a study, right? So the environmental hazard on 100 vehicles, of course, we're not going to have 100 vehicles at all times, right? Let's say we have 50 vehicles at all times. Each vehicle while idle runs one gallon of diesel fuel. 50 gallons of diesel fuel. The emissions in the idle are going to be floating around, especially on a nice cold day, around that vehicle. So keep in mind, the drivers do need a place to sleep. And this is their destination. That's where they plan to sleep. When they go somewhere else, they plan to sleep there. It's a way of life for the professional truck driver that travels over the road. They sleep in their vehicles. That's why they call a sleeper. That's why there's a bed in the back. From the description of what I just saw when I came in here was Amazon blue colors. I'm not saying who's coming in. There were Amazon blue colors. And if I did a study for Amazon, I'd make it Amazon blue to satisfy my employer. Just saying. Also, for 100 trucks, how many employees do you need? The car spaces that were across the top is probably how many vehicles you need to operate that facility. Forklift drivers, dispatchers, everything else that goes along with it. But all the vehicles that are on the sides mimic an Amazon facility. Distribution is what this is. The last facility that was there, they keep throwing around the term warehouse. That was a manufacturing warehouse. This has all the signs of a distribution warehouse. I've seen them, been there, done that, still do that to this day. These are distribution facilities. Where are they distributing to? The drivers are bringing it in. You're talking about the truck drivers and everybody's getting all up in arms about the truck drivers. I get it. I'm a truck driver. I understand. But what you're not ready for is the distribution of what's coming into this facility. The small vans, the small vehicles. If it's not Amazon, great. But the next distribution of what's coming in here, I don't think you're ready for those vehicles. Because it's not just the 180 tractor trailers, 200 tractor trailers that we're talking about. The small vehicles themselves will clog your town, never mind the tractor trailers. And when these drivers, let's say they don't want to sleep here, they want to eat somewhere, what's the closest place they're going to go eat at? There's a subway down by the rotary. There's a 75-foot vehicle parked at that subway and three more behind it. Because they're trying to get the Pete Suites too, because, you know, it's all fantastic, fantastic what we have in this town. And it's going to be clogged. So just my point of view. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
So the purposes will accept the next two people and then I think I would be continuing this onto a next meeting, but have the next two people.
Hi, my name is Tom. It feels dry. I have a couple of questions about the site.
Absolutely.
First of all, the finished floor elevation of the new proposed building, can you tell me what that is?
What, what elevation?
The third floor elevation.
The question was the height of the finished floor elevation.
Of the new building, yes. I thought I heard 220. I thought I heard two-twenty, yeah, it's a little higher than that, and I'm trying to a truer picture.
Sorry, so yes, so to clarify, in your opinion, you are right. The elevation of the floor is four feet up for the loading docks. But as I described to the gentleman, the elevation right outside the building, the height of the building?
Yes.
Was forty-five feet. The height, so to answer your questions about, I think it's two-twenty-four approximately.
Two-twenty-four.
An elevation above sea level.
When you say the height of the building, isn't the height of the building from grade?
Correct.
On the west side?
From grade and all sets.
True. So that would make the height of the building
Forty-five feet.
I think you should check your math, I think it's fifty feet.
Okay, I'll check my math, but my understanding is the building's forty-five feet from the base of the building to the
What's grade adjacent to the building?
I think about two-twenty, it varies throughout.
So if grade is two-twenty and finished floor is two-twenty-five,
Two-twenty-four, well, call it dot height, right, two-twenty-four, yeah.
Finished for the drawing.
But that's, that's four feet up out of the building.
I understand that.
Okay, so that's within the forty-five feet.
When you, when you say height of the building, doesn't that include the foundation wall that sticks above grade, sticks up above grade?
I'm not sure I understand your question, but the total height of the building, if you're standing, if this is my building, I'm standing next to it, it's forty-five feet from where my feet are.
From grade, from grades.
From grade. And then, within the building, maybe Joe understands this.
I thought the height of the building.
I think he is correct.
Oh, yes, yes, sorry. Can we have, all right, please identify yourself for the record.
I'm gonna help answer this question.
It's gonna be fifty feet.
I believe the building is forty-five feet from finished floor.
That's what he said before.
Yes.
That's what he said before.
So, so
But I'm finished.
At the loading dock, if the, where the loading docks are, which are in the middle of all the four corners, it would be about forty-nine feet from the loading dock. But at the corners of the building where the offices are, that wrap each of the four corners to accommodate multiple tenants, it would be forty-five feet. Sir, does that help answer the question?
Yes, yes.
Sorry, I didn't understand your question.
And the height of the existing building that's there now?
It varies.
It varies the maximum height.
My understanding, my understanding is sixty.
Sixty feet.
Sixty feet.
Okay. I believe it's fifty-five foot six inches according to the not that that makes too much of a difference, but it's a five-foot difference. According to the application for a permit to build that warehouse, the height is listed as fifty-five foot six inches, so it's a little bit different. So, what I'm trying to point out here is that the difference between the two buildings is going to be less than what you portrayed earlier.
So my understanding is you're relying on information through the chair, sorry. My understanding is you're relying on information from the building permit from when the building was built?
True.
Okay, so I think we can happily verify the elevation. No problem.
I have a question about the the amount of trees that will be cut down on each side of the building. Can you address that on the west side approximately? How, how much area will be cleared of trees?
I don't have a square footage to give you right now, but I'm happy to make a note and give that to you at the next public hearing. The only, so there's scrub vegetation here now. There's a water tower and everything else, so
On the west side?
Yeah, on the west side, we're not going within two hundred feet of the stream. This is an area for a stormwater basin here, which is a shallow stormwater basin. This is an area that will be cleared of trees right now. The edge of pavement is right about where, actually, right here at the start line. So from the edge of pavement out here, I'll say that's maybe, I don't, I don't wanna give you a dimension, but I'll say it's approximately a hundred feet or so. I'll confirm that for you, I can give you
It's about a hundred feet, so you're going to clear about a hundred feet.
And let me give you that number.
It's about a hundred feet, that's what it is, I just So it's about a hundred
I'm just, I, I just wanna make one point, I think it'd be a good idea to have more information kind of overall in the landscaping. I just had, I guess, a quick, very quick question, so if I'm understanding it correctly, none of the existing trees that are on the property would be cut down, it's, it would be enough away that none of the existing trees would be impacted, or?
I don't think that, no, I'm sorry, no, I I think it's, there will be trees impacted in that light green area that you see, that L-shaped light green area on the bottom. There are, there is vegetation there. So in this area, these areas will you know, have trees removed, and also there's a lot of scrubby vegetation over here that will be
Okay, perfect, thank you.
In addition to the scrubby vegetation, there's also trees on that side that would also be removed.
Yeah, I'm not sure which trees, but yes, there's vegetation, yeah.
Another one, another question. There's a retaining wall at the southeast corner of the building. What's the height of that retaining wall? Approximately?
It varies, six to seven feet.
Six to seven feet?
Yep.
And then on top of that would be a, a semi tractor-trailer. So if you were walking along the bike path or the rail trail, you would look up at a seven-foot retaining wall and a truck on top of that.
So it wouldn't be on top of that, it would be
adjacent to, okay, and what is, what is the distance from that retaining wall to the rail trail?
To the property of the rail trail or the rail trail?
To the, to the rail trail. To the property line, it's probably pretty close.
Yes. It's, it's feet.
Feet. So as you're walking along the rail trail
There would be a retaining wall.
A seven-foot-high retaining wall, and then maybe ten-foot setback from that would be the center of the roadway for the trucks.
I think your approximation is accurate. They're pretty accurate.
One last question. The traffic volume study is based on a study, and that that's three and a half years old. I would think that something like this, a, a more current study could be performed. Is that right, it's based on a three and a half-year-old study?
Through the chair, I think.
Yes.
The traffic counts at the intersection of Shaker and Chestnut were taken in 2019, however, we projected those volumes to 2022, which is our existing conditions presented in the study using a background traffic growth rate that's commensurate with the future growth rate determinant in concert with the town.
Okay. That's it.
Awesome.
Thank you. I'll be very brief, my name is Randy Fair, I live on One-Six-Seven Pease Road. Pete's my neighbor. I work manufacturing, so thank you to the, the gentleman who was the truck driver. They're the lifeblood of this country, keeping, keeping all of us in, in everything we do, and I don't want anybody to take that I'm against truck drivers, or as a community that we're against truck drivers because they're providing a great service for us. But I think I'm pleased to see how many people came out to this meeting and are getting involved as a community in East Long Meadow. And I would just wanted to remind all the citizens that we have other avenues. The board here might be limited by their legal requirements. Once Levac and, and the developers and everybody get through all the permitting processes, there might not be any way to stop the development. But as a citizen, we can go to our town committee and we can put in zoning or change the zoning, we can we can go and we can ask for curfews on truck traffic on certain streets. We have other avenues that we can legally pursue, and we should be starting to look at those now because this is a blight in our neighborhood. And at some point, somebody's gonna propose a project that's gonna have to get approved, and it's gonna have more truck traffic. And if we're not thinking ahead, then we're gonna be stuck with something that we don't wanna live with in our community. So we ought to be looking just like the master plan and, and designating and figuring out what we can legally do as a community to at least bound the possibility of what could go on this property. That's all.
Well said.
Important to get involved in any type of capacity, would you, that, if you'd like to respond?
Yeah, I could.
Thank you.
Please hold your pause. I, I think I just wanted to, as you, I presume that you're gonna continue this, which we appreciate. Appreciate the input from the neighbors, and would point out that with respect to the uses, there will be no uses in this building that are not conforming to the zoning. But that's the way it is, if something comes along that is not conforming to the zoning, it would have to go to the appropriate building inspector, the special permitting authority, or whatever it is, to, to do something that would be beyond what's conforming to the zoning. And in that regard, we, we did reach out to try and meet with the appeals neighbors, that for some reason it was miscommunication, there was communication back to Rob Levac that indicated that the board was not ready at this time to meet, although they would be happy to meet, and I think we would be, during the time between now and the next meeting, be happy to sit down and have further discussion that might be productive. And with that, I'll turn it back to you.
One just other quick thing I'd like to emphasize. If anybody has any other comments, you can also submit them by writing, you can, we have our great planning board staff here, you can reach out to, you can even reach out to me directly, I don't know about the, the board members, but I can at least speak for myself, I'm more than happy to field any type of comments or questions or things on this project or any other project for that matter. So seeing where we're at right now, what is the pleasure of the board?
I mean, Mr. Chairman, I think board should, through Planning Director, request an independent traffic study and trip generation study from a totally independent group with the emphasis on not using boilerplate numbers from IT, but rather actually looking into what the real traffic generation is gonna be out of a facility like this.
I think that would be a
I agree with George, but I think one of the problems is we don't know what the facility is, so how can you generate a traffic study? So I would like, I mean, we previously asked for the identification of the renters in another permit that we, we voted in favor of tonight, and I think we as responsible board members should know who's going in. I am assured, I, I, I hear Frank Fitzgerald, and I'm assured that what he's saying is truthful, that who goes in there will buy by what they're supposed to, what, what the law allows. But you can't do a traffic study unless you know what that is, so I find this a real point of contention here.
So, Mr. Chairman, if I could, just before you go first. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna agree with George on the, on the traffic study, but just for a different reason. As I challenged Mr. Pill, we spec, we approve spec buildings in development all the time on this board, we routinely do it not knowing who is moving into that location. And just single out one developer, even though I know it's a massive project. I, I, I'm gonna agree with your, with your motion, but just not agree with the conclusion to have it.
I, I certainly agree with Russ, that we don't need to know the name of who's going in there. What we do need to do is to have a firm commitment as to what kind of operations are gonna go on there. Okay? What kind of operations are gonna justify a hundred doors on, on, in a building like that? And a firm commitment of some kind that that is the most that will happen there. Because once the site is approved and the building is built, there's no special permits to, to issue or anything like that. Anybody goes in there can do what's legally possible, even though it may create a hazard or a nuisance in the neighborhood. Okay, because there's nothing in the zoning bylaw that limits the number of trucks. The only thing that limits that is our approval of site plan for agreeing that this will not become a nuisance. So it's important that we get a firm commitment as to what's gonna happen.
So will friendly agree to disagree?
Yes. All right, seeing that, do I?
Mr. Chairman?
Oh, yes.
So, so first of all, we came tonight fully understanding that the planning board would likely wanna do an independent peer review. To make that as productive as possible, first of all, we, we agree and understand to make that as productive as possible, we want you to understand that we're proposing this building based on the IT, based on the use that we're proposing. There's a lot of speculation about what that use potentially could be. Obviously, if something changed, as Mr. Fitzgerald had said, if it's not a byright use, it would certainly have to come back. If it's something that's allowed by right, the building could potentially be occupied for different uses, but that would obviously affect things, so the proponent had suggested that we can even look at a couple different types of uses. Let's, let's get creative, let's break it down. Again, in the end, if there's traffic mitigation that's required, we're committed to doing that. We understand that you don't wanna be left with people in town having frustrations and concerns about what your decision was, we completely understand that. So we're committed to working through the process with you, this is a process, this is as, just so everybody is aware and feel, take the liberty, when they continue the meeting tonight, it'll be continued to a date certain. Between now and then, they'll have their independent peer reviewer probably look at the traffic, we wanna make sure we give them enough time to do so. That will then be provided back to the board. I'm sure it'll be available to the public, and we will review it, and our traffic engineer will be made available to communicate directly with yours for any information, and the proponent will clarify any, anything that they can. They, they're telling you genuinely there's not a tenant for the building, we don't know who's gonna be the final occupant. We, we would probably wish we did. So we appreciate everyone's time tonight, you know it's a long process, but we're committed to getting the answers that the board needs. Thank you.
I'd just like to make one more comment. It's not the, it's not the who, it's the what. The what determines what's gonna happen with the traffic study, the what determines what's gonna happen with the intersection, so from my own personal view, it was one-fifth of this planning board, it's the what.
Yeah, and we wanna make sure that answer is direct and straightforward in that any decisions that are issued are based on that. We understand, thank you.
In writing?
Yes, ma'am, everything will be in writing on record.
So, what's the pleasure of the board now?
So, just really quickly, so I would maybe suggest to our Planning Director, Director of Planning, and Mr. Levac and whomever, to review the comments of this board and the others that were in the audience specifically as it refers to, there were suggestions about also looking at Dwight and Chestnut, Benton and Chestnut, and other areas in town.
Cut throes.
Cut throes for the additional traffic study. And that you all, and between Bailey and yourselves, there's an agreement on the locations that will be studied. So that everyone's comments were heard and acted on. Yes, sir. And I think that would go a long way. I would agree, yes, and we'll look at operational We'll look at operational related items as well. So there's certain routing and certain times of day and different things that have been mentioned, we're certainly going to look at that as well. So with that caveat, I would make a motion first that we require an independent traffic study with the scope of service agreed on, on behalf of the planning board by our director and the petitioner. That's a motion.
I'll, I'll second, I'll second that with it to be funded by the petitioner.
Okay. Motion's been made and seconded, Bailey. I know you had, did you have a quick comment?
No, I'm good.
Okay. All right, we have a motion on the table. It has been seconded. Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none? All those, excuse, excuse me. All those in favor of the motion say aye. Aye. All those opposed? Any abstentions? That carries four to zero.
I'd like to make a motion to continue this public hearing to.
You can.
I think you're going to need a little time to interrupt. Those are the next three days.
Okay. First one, we're not going to.
To, to November 1st.
Yeah, I think it's November 1st.
November 15th is a public hearing, but it doesn't matter. It's up to you. With the continuance, it doesn't matter.
Who knows if November 1st is the election?
It is not.
Not.
To, to November 15th, 2022.
A motion's been made to continue.
Second.
Which, at this location?
Yeah.
Okay.
Second.
All right. Motion has been made and seconded to continue. I will not hear that right now respectfully. Any more discussion on this by the board? Hearing none? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Any abstentions? No, so that carries four to zero.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you, everyone, for.
Everybody else.
Make a motion. I'll make a motion for a five-minute recess. 10-minute recess.
10-minute. Okay. Second? All those in favor?
That's my card if you want to get.
So do we need a motion or?
No. Just so we are reopening. So we have director's report, Bailey director's report.
Yeah, so the biggest thing, I was just going to mention the public workshop we were going to have for the center town mixed use. And we also, it's a joint workshop for that and the municipal vulnerability preparedness. I can never say that without tripping up, but just the MVP workshop, that will be held on October 12th in the Birchland Middle School cafeteria at probably 6:00 PM, I believe, October 12th. I think it, did we say, I think we.
Six to 7:30.
Six to 7:30, yeah, yeah, okay. And then I did have one other thing. Right now on the agenda, we don't have anything for the next meeting, correct?
No.
But what is that? October 4th, we don't have anything on the next agenda. The deadline for the non-public hearing is Friday.
Friday.
Okay. And have you heard any, any applicants so far?
They're kind of getting held up without Kevin right now.
Yeah, so as of now, we don't have anything on the agenda.
Do we have a building inspector?
He works part-time at night, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday until.
Did he take another job?
He works in Agawam during the day and then comes here part-time at night.
Yeah. So there may be someone else coming at some point. We don't have any news on that right now, but, but yeah. So in terms of the October 4th meeting, though, I can reach out to the board once the deadline passes and then we can.
Decide.
Decide on whether we hold it or not. I won't have anything.
Meet it. We can decide it prior as without.
Yeah, if there's no business, we just, there's no business.
Yeah, scheduling can be done over email.
Okay, perfect.
And just on scheduling, just to let everybody know, I will be out of the country for the 18th meeting.
Okay.
Without, where I'm going to be is no access to internet, so.
Fair enough.
We do the power of Zoom now.
You don't have a satellite phone? No, I, well, even if I did, I'm not going to. I'm, I'm hiking the Scottish Highlands. Oh, great. Yeah, for six days, yeah. Have you bought your kilt yet?
That's all I have though for the.
Got to get a picture of me in one of those.
Perfect.
So I will, I will make a motion to move into executive session for the purpose of discussing pending litigation only re, period. And not reconvene. And not to reconvene.
And not to reconvene, okay.
Okay, that's my motion.
So a motion Pete has been made.
And we'll second that.
Seconded.
To, to go into executive session.
Any more thoughts? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Roll call.
Roll call, I apologize.
Roll call.
Roll call. For executives, the motion on going into executive session without coming.
Without reconvening.
Without reconvening.
So what do I have to do?
Turn open only.
You have to vote. You have to vote.
We should do a roll call on going into executive.
Okay. Aye.
George.
Aye.
Russ? And I'm an aye as well. And that motion passes four to zero.
Good. Good. Okay.
Would you like to go to the other room or say yes, someone's here?